Hi Melissa. Alright, I'll try that again. I don't think anyone heard me. Good evening. We're just waiting for a few more people to join. And then, which will hopefully happen soon, and then we'll begin. Good. Okay, good. Looks like everyone's joining. Ernie. Hey Jeff. Okay, I think that's all of us, so.
Hey, Ernie, you appear to be here as a participant twice. And I'm not sure if that's contributing to the weird washing machine light sound in the background, which is interference. Can you, can you kill one of your persons?
That would be Avatar. I don't even have an avatar.
You do now. I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna remove, I'm gonna remove the second one, alright?
Yeah.
Rod, I only see him once.
I have a noise reduction machine going on too. Let me turn that down and see. Better?
Yeah.
Alright, never had it interfere before.
It could be the cat.
Are you blaming Mary's cat?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, let's go ahead and approve the agenda if everyone's had a chance to review it. Are there any changes? Anyone want to make a motion? Jackie?
Move to approve.
Thank you. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thanks Brian. All in favor, say aye. Or any-
Roll call it.
Oh, sorry.
Aye.
Um, Jackie Allen, how do you vote?
Aye.
Leah Romano?
Aye.
Ernie Chikatelli?
Aye.
Jeff Goodrich?
Aye.
Jeff LaBelle?
Aye.
Brian Loeb?
Aye.
Melissa Horowitz, aye. Okay, so our meeting objectives for tonight are to appoint a member of the planning commission to the Green Fleet Working Group. We've been asked by the town manager to do that. Um, debrief on the town plan process and future strategies for the planning commission, update on town plan action items, update on village designation. Um, are there any comments from the public? Stuart?
Hi. Good evening, everybody. So I wanted to make a, another comment regarding the open meeting law. And it goes something like this. Norwich unfortunately has a long history of open meeting law violations. They date, it dates back a few, couple of years to when Mr. Deckert was the planning director and zoning director. And he absolutely refused to generate minutes within the timeframe that is allotted under the open meeting law. That's five days. And it seems to me that, that unfortunately, the planning commission has chosen not to cure the violations of the open meeting law. Wherein, there were at least a half a dozen working groups that met sporadically. I don't know how many times they met. I don't even know how many people were involved, actually. But what I do know is, is that there were working groups. They did meet. And they did not observe the open meeting law during the entire process of the foundation of the of the town plan. So, the letters that you've written to me do not provide a cure. All they do is promise in the future. And these promises have been made before and not kept. They do promise to cure the violations in the future, but not in the past. So I, I really do not consider that, that the violations have been cured. And to build a town plan on, on violations of the open meeting law, to me, is, is simply wrong. So, thanks for, thanks for hearing me out.
Thank you for your comments. Um, hearing no others, we'll move on to review and approve the minutes of October 22nd. So hopefully everyone had a chance to review those before the meeting. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from October 22nd, 2020? Thank you Jackie. Jackie? Uh, do I have a second? Jeff LaBelle, thank you. And we'll do a roll call.
No, let's have, let's have a discussion, Melissa.
Sorry. I was going there and went somewhere else. Discussion? Jeff, did you have anything you wanted to?
Yeah, I wanted to talk about a couple things. Uh, on page two of the minutes. And, uh, the document's not numbered, so, um, I'm looking at page two of the minutes. Um, I'm not sure which paragraph this is, but toward the bottom, says Alan commented on the apparent irony that the 2018 plan suffered withering criticism. So, I'm wondering, is this a transcription of the minutes of, of the audio?
Um, I'd have to defer to Rod on that.
Um, no, I think I actually made those notes, but it was probably a transcription at the time. I mean, I think Jackie spoke those words.
But, well, if, if this is, I'd like to ask that we take a look at the, at the audio because we're being recorded. I don't recall this one, and I'm going to present one other. Uh, I, I don't recall these specific details in this paragraph.
Okay.
So, I, I'd like to suggest we take a look at the, uh, at the audio, and then revisit the minutes next time. And I have, uh, one, one more that uh, I'd like to talk about. Also, page two. Uh, at the very bottom of page two, Goodrich's clarification, Horowitz wrote the letters using uh, versus signing it. Horowitz responded that she conferred with the town council in preparation letter. So my understanding, my recollection was that Melissa said she did not write the letter, but she signed it.
Um, I mean, my recollection, and it's been a few weeks, is that I conferred with the legal counsel.
My question was, did you write the letter? The answer is you didn't write the letter.
Um, did I actually sit down and be the first person to write a draft? No. But did I confer with him before, going back and forth about the letter? Yes.
That's not my question. My question was, did you write the letter?
Okay, I, I don't know what.
So if you're, so if, if this is what was actually in the audio, then let's correct the audio because you did not write the letter.
Wait a minute, I don't, I don't understand. Yeah, I don't think just because someone writes a first draft and other people have input on it, that means I have no participation in writing the letter, but I
I, I, hey, look, uh, we can sit before a court, and we may yet. I asked a very simple question. Did you write this letter? And I recall you saying that you did not write this letter.
Can I just ask for clarification, what you're, why would we be sitting before a court? Are you asking, threatening me?
I don't understand threatening. That would be projection on your part. Are you threatening me? Are you threatening me?
I don't think so. I was asking why.
Great. So I asked a simple question. Did you write the letter? The answer is no, you didn't write the letter.
I did not write the first draft of the letter. I did confer with the attorney about the letter.
So let's just be honest about this.
Jeff, are you proposing a specific change to the minutes? I mean, can, can we like, just focus on trying to get the minutes done here?
Okay, well.
No, I
Are you proposing a change in the minutes, Jeff? Do you have a specific change that you would like to suggest?
Yeah, well, I'm, I'm suggesting that, that whoever recorded this session goes back and looks at the recording and tries to provide an accurate summary of the minutes, because these minutes don't reflect what I believe was actually discussed, including the fact that Melissa did not write the letter.
Rod, are you willing to go back and?
Wait a minute, I, I'd like to speak first, please, first.
Alright, go ahead.
Like to speak, I mean, Jeff, Jeff, one of the things you commented on was my comment, and I can tell you that this is what I said. So I have no problem with what is represented here in that bottom paragraph. The third from the bottom. I have no problem with that. I don't see a need to go back to recordings at all.
Jeff LaBelle, you got a comment?
Yeah, I, these are one of the most complete set of minutes that I've ever seen this planning commission produce. So the notion, and Jeff has, Goodrich has routinely asked that the minutes be less complete um, and not go into the blow-by-blow. So I, I don't think it would be productive personally to go back and try to look at the recording again, if, but I, I, you know, I personally would have no problem accepting an amendment to that, the bottom of that page here. And, and you know, if, if it's accurate to say that Horowitz responded that she, while she did not write the first draft, she conferred with town council in the preparation of the letter. That would, it seemed to me, match what Melissa you're saying and what Jeff is concerned about. Would that address your concern, Jeff?
Jeff? Would that-
No. So, uh, I, I don't have, uh, the same recollection, but I'm only one vote, and I'm glad to vote no.
Okay.
Well, that's my recollection of what happened.
Okay, thanks.
So, but I don't know if we, I mean, if Jeff's gonna vote no, maybe we just leave it the way it is. I, I don't feel like there's a material difference frankly, between what's recorded in the minutes and what I'm proposing. I was trying to, to be, accommodate Jeff's concerns. But if he's gonna still vote no, I, I, I would drop my suggestion.
Okay. Any other discussion? Would someone like to make a motion?
I think we have a motion on the table already, and it's been seconded. We're just having the discussion, I think. Yep.
Ernie had his hand up.
Ernie?
Yeah, um, I think what Jeff's trying to do is, is get a, a, a level of accuracy that we're maybe not used to. But I think with the, um, uh, discussions of open, open meeting law and so on, I think he's, I think he's actually correct. First of all, I, I don't remember Melissa even saying that she conferred with him, but I'll accept that she said that. But the thing is, is that he asked a specific question that had a, you know, basically a yes or no answer, and didn't get that. Um, and, and I think that it's fair, if, 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 if you bring up the fact that he sought the clarification, then it's fair to, for him to actually insist that the minutes reflect what he asked and what the answer to it was. I mean, you know, if, if-
Andrew Cook, join the meeting.
Um, so, you know, I think it's just a matter of, of trying to, to start living the, 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 the spirit, as well as the letter of the, uh, the open meeting law here, is what Jeff's looking at, I think.
Okay, Jeff LaBelle, I see you again.
Ernie, would it, would it help your concern?
You're not, say again?
Would it help your concern to, if I were to re-suggest the compromise I was suggesting here, which is that we change the sentence to say that Horowitz responded that while she did not write the first draft of the letter, she nonetheless conferred with town council in the preparation of the letter.
That's an interesting question, because I think that's a modification of what was actually said, on one hand, but I think it, it may be a truth, but it's a truth that was developed today, not at that meeting.
It's, it's my recollection of what she said, but you can ask her, she's here. Melissa, do you have a recollection?
I'm not gonna, I, I'm not, I'm not gonna grill Melissa. I, I'm, I'm not that, it's not, it's not the way, that's not what I'm aiming at here. I'm not trying to put Melissa on the spot, either. Um, it's just that, it's, we gotta start disciplining ourselves to be accurate. And, and, you know, this you, you, this might be a good place to start.
Okay, are there any further comments? Jeff Goodrich?
Yeah, uh, there's a video of the meeting. So it's not too hard to say, let's look at the meetings, uh, the minutes next time we gather, after Rod has the opportunity to review the video.
Okay, Jeff LaBelle?
I'd like to suggest we move to a vote.
Okay. Um, Jack, Jackie, how do you vote?
I'll go aye.
Leah?
Aye.
Okay, Ernie?
I have to say, I like Jeff's approach, so nay.
Okay, Jeff LaBelle?
Aye.
Jeff Goodrich?
Nay.
Brian Loeb?
Aye.
Melissa Horowitz, aye. So, our next agenda item um, is announcements, reports, updates, and correspondence. I'm not aware of any, Rod, is there any that I'm missing?
No.
Okay.
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, great. Uh, next, um, Herb had asked us to appoint a member of the planning commission to the Green Fleet Working Group. And this is gonna have a member of the select board, two members of the energy committing committee, and one citizen at large. And it's looking at reducing greenhouse, um, gas emissions, you know, through municipal means with our vehicles and with the, um, town buildings and things like that. Does anyone, uh, want to volunteer to be on this committee? Ernie? Uh, anyone else?
I'll volunteer. Do you, do you, do you just need one person? Do you just need one person?
Okay. Are you okay if, if Ernie's that person, or do you want to be considered as well?
No, he had his hand up first.
Okay. Okay. Okay, um, I don't believe we need to take a vote on this, as far as I know.
We need to vote.
Okay.
Question, Melissa, just, um, what is the responsibility of this person relative to the committee? Are they gonna sort of keep us informed and, and try to relay to the group our, you know, issues that we have, or do they kind of just, you know, just attend the meetings and speak up?
Um, I would hope that they would report back, um, to us of what's happening. Uh, that would be a request I have. I don't think Herb was that formal in his description of what he just asked us to appoint a member. Um, but I think with most of these things that we appoint members to, we, we do ask for updates, you know, periodically. And Jeff Goodrich?
Yeah, so in terms of process, I would hope that a select board member could reach out, maybe the select board has a liaison to the planning commission, who could rea, reach out to, uh, the planning commission, instead of the select board staff reaching out in this fashion. So I think the, the way in which this has been accomplished, and I'm not undermining Herb, it's not my intent, is, is not appropriate.
Okay.
So I hope that the planning commission could say to the select board, "Look, if you want us to appoint a member, then as a select board, reach out to us." And we'll proceed accordingly.
Um, I mean, I don't know that, I feel that's, personally, I don't feel that's necessary. I don't know how the group feels if someone wants to make a motion. Um, Jeff LaBelle?
Yeah, I mean, um, Stuart has his hands up, maybe you can quickly hear from him if you want to beforehand, but I, I also don't think it's necessary to, uh, I have no problem with staff fulfilling the responsibilities that we hired them for, and I don't make the same distinction between staff and commissions that, that Jeff does, but that's just a difference of opinion.
Yeah, like open meeting law.
Okay, can we, we're gonna get into some more hearty discussions coming up here. I'm gonna ask the personal jabs, stop now. I, we have stuff-
Hey, Melissa, you, you said I was threatening you, so why don't you stop the personal jabs? This projection, why don't you stop the projection, then we'll go forward.
Great, I will. Thank you. Stuart Richards?
Stuart Richards, 82, just an informational question. Can I ask, who is forming this committee and who it reports to? How many people are on it? Who's on it?
Um, I can tell, tell you who, how many people are on it. It's a select board member, two members of the energy committee, and a citizen at large. I'm not sure who initially forms this. Rod, do you, or Mary, do you know?
I think it just came out of, of conversations uh, about trying to improve our fleet. That it has been a conversation that we do want to, for instance, in the police department, we're looking at hybrid vehicles. It's probably, um, unreasonable to think that there's a, a hybrid fire engine or a, you know, plow truck, but just in trying to, uh, become more sustainable as a community, we want, would like, just wanted some, uh, committee to do some research.
So, I applaud, I applaud the effort and the goal, both. I think it's great. I, but I'd just like to know, you know, who's, who's driving this? Is it, is it Herb? Is it the select board? Have there been votes on how, how the thing was gonna be formed, and who are they gonna report to?
Rod, did you ever-
Yes, yes. So, Mary may be able to better answer some of these questions than, than I can, but what I would, I, what I would say is that, um, this is an action item that's contained in the town plan to, um, promote a positive response to the climate challenge.
That's not the question, Rod.
Excuse me, if I, if I could possibly finish, maybe I'll satisfy your question, but I'm actually not just answering your question as a point of order. So, um, the, the initiative, or at least the impetus for forming the committee and looking at ways of, uh, reducing greenhouse gas emissions for the town fleet and town buildings, is actually an action item in the town plan. I cannot answer exactly to the satisfaction of Stuart and others who initiated this thing right now, who gave it its name, and who it's reporting to. But my understanding and assumption is that it's reporting directly to the select board. Maybe Mary can help out on that. I don't know whether the select board authorized the town manager to communicate this request on their behalf, or, or not.
Okay, I believe we were going through the town plan requirements and looking at the ones that, uh, you know, it required the select board to take some action. So we've been going down one by one, for instance, the childcare committee, so I kind of took a hold of that one. I think John Langus has been the, uh, main proponent of a lot of our green initiatives. So, uh, but, and I don't know if he will end up being the select board member who is a, a part of this, but I think we did ask Herb to, um, just to get the, the, um, process going.
Mm-hmm.
You know, there's nothing that I can see that is, uh, I don't know, out of order with it. We have had, I think, uh, in our zeal, maybe some problems with the open meeting law, and I would expect that this group would be very strict about how they go forward on that, but I just, you know, think this is a good faith effort to try to have a more- a more sustainable future for our town. That's it.
Thanks, Mary. Leah, did you, you have your hand up?
And, and so I have a question regarding urgency to make the recommendation. Do we have a month to do so? Or is it more along the lines of this might be process moving forward that people are going through checklists and just trying to get it on our agenda?
And who are you asking the question of?
Um.
Me or?
The group.
I don't have an answer to that, so.
Asked if we would appoint someone, um, and it was a few weeks ago. I mean, does any, I, I'm not saying that anyone has any objections necessarily to Ernie being the person, unless I'm misunderstanding. So if, if someone wants to make a motion, we could see. Jeff?
I moved to appoint Ernie Guttelli as a representative on this, uh, task force.
Second.
Jeff, seconds. Um, any discussion? More discussion? Okay, roll call, Jackie, how do you vote? Leah, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ernie, how do you vote?
Aye.
Uh, Jeff Lebel, how do you vote?
Aye.
Jeff Goodrich, how do you vote?
Aye.
Brian Lo, how do you vote?
He might be.
Yeah. Brian, are you there? Uh, I'll go ahead and vote Melissa Horowitz, aye.
Pass this six zero.
Okay. Great, thank you. Okay, so now, I mean, we've been.
Just before we move on, in, in a lot of the comments with regard to last meeting's minutes, can I actually, um, seek some direction from the group as to how you'd like this discussion to be, um, described in the minutes?
Jeff Lebel?
Well, my suggestion is that you would say that the, um, you know, the planning commission considered, um, you know, a request from Herb to appoint a member to the, whatever the name of the commission is, uh, Jeff Lebel, you know, uh, a motion was heard to appoint Ernie Chikotelli that was seconded and approved six zero.
So specifically, what I, what I'm looking for is a comment from Jeff Goodrich as to whether he wants his observation about process included or not.
Jeff, you do.
Yeah, exactly. I mean, so, uh, uh, I, I'm not gonna take Jeff Lebel to task for his comment about my view of minutes previously, but we're either gonna be accurate or not. Uh, in this particular case, I would like to note, or have the minutes reflect the fact that I think if the select board would like to engage the planning commission, then the appropriate manner to do that would be select board to planning commission, not staff to staff, or staff to planning commission.
Okay, then if you could also reflect the fact that I, I disagree with that, uh, opinion.
Okay.
Okay, um, Stuart Richards?
So, I just, if I could just ask Mary to, to clarify, was, was there ever a, a movement or emotion or a desire, or, I, I mean, how did it work with the select board? Select board tasked Herb to get?
Yes.
It, it was, okay, so.
Yeah, let's. It was not, uh, to my knowledge, it wasn't fleshed out as to exactly how members, what the timeframe, uh, and that sort of thing. We just delegated it to Herb.
Terrific, thank you.
You're welcome.
Great, if we're all comfortable, let's move on to the next agenda item, which is debrief on the town process and future strategies. Um, Leah had kindly put together, uh, a few different sources of questions on debriefing after uh, completing a task. So I took some of them, some of them were, were from different sources, they were repetitive. So I put them, a few of them together for us to discuss. I hope everyone had a chance to review them. Again, I'm going to ask that people, this isn't the time to attack people, let's be respectful, let's be constructive. And I'm also going to, I want everyone to have an opportunity to speak, um, if they want to. So I, you know, if people are dominating, I, you know, or speaking for a really long period of time, I may ask them to step aside and let someone else have some input. Um, so those are just kind of the ground rules I would like to set, um, but I think we can go ahead and just, um, Ernie?
Well, finish what you're saying first.
No, go ahead.
Is this the discussion that I asked for, or the beginning of the discussion that I asked for about, you know, improving the, the, uh, the way the, the planning commission operates and so on?
That's how I viewed it, was that we can debrief on the town plan, but also talk about future strategies going forward, how we want things to work. Uh, Jeff Goodrich?
Yeah, I'd like to put, propose that we put this on a future agenda, since I just received this information.
Um, actually, I sent it out a few months ago.
Uh, no.
She didn't?
Yes.
I just received an agenda, so when I asked last, at the last meeting, which is reflected in the minutes that were just passed against my vote, this would be a future agenda item. I just received the packet, I don't know, three days ago. So, given that fact, I'd like to propose that we put this on a future agenda item.
Okay.
About what that will consist of, that would be fantastic, but let's have some time to prepare for this.
Okay, I mean, I'm a little hesitant because I feel like I've gotten some negative feedback, um, about this not being on the agenda before. It's been on the agenda, it's been removed, and so I'm concerned if we keep putting it off, it's never going to be spoken about. Um, Jackie?
I, I've been clear since our last meeting that this was gonna be on the agenda, so, um, uh, this is not a surprise. This is not a surprise at all. Um, it was, I thought you, I thought we were very clear that this was gonna be on the agenda tonight, but when we met last, which was about two weeks ago.
Jeff Goodrich?
With respect, I've asked for agenda items many, many times, and I don't know when they're gonna show up on the agenda until two or three days before the meeting. Two or three days ago, I was made aware that this is on this agenda.
Okay, would now be a good time to, um, have a motion on how we would like to proceed. Does anyone wanna make a motion on how to proceed? Jackie?
I think we should proceed with the discussion. I think we've all talked about this enough that we should be able to, in fact, you know, I, I think we should proceed.
Anyone have a second on that? Uh, Jeff Lebel?
Yeah, I don't know, uh, is that a formal motion? I mean, I, 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 I think we approved the agenda at the beginning of this meeting. Um, this is on the agenda, and, um, it's not a surprise to me, too. It's been telegraphed for months that this is coming up. But I would suggest that if, you know, if, if, if at the end of this conversation, Jeff or others have issues that they wanna raise that we haven't raised, and they need more time to prepare, I'd certainly support a continuation of this conversation at a subsequent meeting to accommodate them. I wouldn't wanna, to prevent that, uh, them from having time to formulate their thoughts, but I, I don't see the harm. I mean, this body is completely dysfunctional, and we need to have a conversation about how to, how to get back to the point where we can be civil to each other and, and, and be constructive and get work done.
Thank you, Jeff. Ernie?
Hey, as a point of order, this body is completely dysfunctional in five to two votes. So, we're, we're using words like dysfunction now, so I just wanna be clear, Melissa, that you said something earlier about how we address one another.
I, I don't think, sorry, and maybe I'm ignorant, but I didn't think that that was any attack on anyone. I think that was saying our entire.
It's not dysfunctional. Five people see it one way, two people see it another way, so why would we use such a pejorative term?
Okay, I, I personally don't see what Jeff said in that way, but Ernie, would you like to speak on this topic?
Well, what I, what I first like to say is that, it, that I view this as, as a large and, and, and complex issue. It's not gonna be something that's gonna be discussed tonight, and that's gonna be the end of it. I don't think there's gonna be any resolution tonight. I think we might get a little bit of, of a sense of what the issues are. Um, and then, you know, I think, yeah, I think this is something that, that in order to construct something that will, you, you know, lasting and effective, um, i- it's gonna take a little bit more thought than, than just sort of blurting stuff tonight. Um, I think this should be something, this should be talked, this should, this discussion should continue for, I don't know, I, there should be a section of every single agenda for, for, for some time to come. That includes a dis, this discussion, so that people have a chance to think, because we're not just trying to, we're not just trying to come up with a, this is not, this is not, the, the, the open meeting law issue is a, is a symptom of what's wrong. It's not the whole problem. Um, and, and I think there's a lot of rebuilding that needs to be done, uh, a lot of listening that needs to be done, um, and so on. And, and I think that, um, we could start tonight. I don't think that, um, uh, it, this is gonna last very long, because I don't think, um, even I, who asked to have this brought up, um, I didn't know until three days ago that it was actually on the agenda. You had said it was going to be last meeting. That's what I remember, um, when, cause I specifically asked. Um, and you said yes, and I sort of kinda guessed that that's what this was. It wasn't until I just asked you, was I sure that that's what this was about? I know that, I do remember that Leah had said she was gonna work something up, but I didn't know that related to what I had asked for. You know, I mean, so there's a lot of cloudiness tonight, and I think, you know, this is something that is gotta be worked on carefully and thoroughly. It's not gonna, it's not gonna be, so I think that if, um, with that in mind, if we keep that in mind, and then this is gonna be on every week, every meeting, at least once a month for a, a, you know, maybe pick a piece of this and bring it up. I mean, Leah's got some, 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 some points here that, that we could talk. I wouldn't, I don't know if we'd even get through all of these tonight. And it would be hours, and we yet, we still have other stuff that, that actually has some timeframes that I think we have to deal with tonight.
Yeah, thanks, Ernie, and I don't think anyone's saying it has to be, you know, resolved.
And I understand that, but I mean, I think that, you know, I think Jeff's concerns are, are valid, but I also think, Jeff Goodrich's concerns are valid, but Jeff Lebel's, um, point about that we can, we can, if we treat it as something that's gonna be ongoing and serious, um, and I think having it, uh, counting on it being a part of our discussions in every meeting will sort of contribute to the serious taking it seriously. I think.
I've got it. I, I don't mean to cut you off, I have a couple more hands up.
I, I can stop, I, I, I might get repetitive.
Okay, but I do, I, I appreciate your comments. Uh, Mary, did you have your hand up?
Yes, I, uh, yes, I did. Um, I'm surprised to hear a, a couple of things. I'm surprised that three days' notice is not enough for the agenda, cause we often operate under that for the select board for numerous issues. I'm a little surprised. And also, I'm also surprised that the problem could be five-two votes, because, um, I think that the result of a five-two vote is a direction, and I think there, also the result is that there's a minority that does not agree, and I think that the minority, um, opinion is very important because it shows that not all issues are, um, you know, resolved. But I do think that a majority vote is a direction and should be respected, and when I hear Ernie talking about that it's, this is a very um, large, ongoing problem, and that it should be dealt with each time, to me, that means that maybe there's not a trust level, and you need a check-in or something like that. Um, but I'm, I'm just, I'm just a little surprised to hear about these issues and hoping that there can be a resolution so that, you know, you guys are using your time wisely. You all have lives, and you know, there's, there are issues before the town, but they're not life and death. So I'm just hoping this can be resolved to everybody's satisfaction.
Thank you, Mary. And Linda, do you have your hand up? Linda?
So she's on mute. I don't know if she needs to be taken off mute in order to talk.
Linda, Linda, can you, can you unmute?
Can you hear me?
Yeah, now we can hear you.
No, my hand was out back when you were talking about the last issue, and I was, uh, glad for the question that Leah asked, cause that's what I wanted to know what the timeframe was, so it's not relevant now, but thank you.
All right, sorry I missed that, Linda. I'll try and keep a better eye. Uh, Jeff Goodrich?
Yeah, I'd just like to respond to Mary, whom I appreciate and respect greatly. So when we talked about this topic months ago, among other things, we talked about how we would work with Leah, how the commission might work to address broader concerns, et cetera. That didn't happen. In my experience with respect to agendas and agenda items, Mary, is that I, I don't know what's gonna show up on, on each meeting. I don't know until a couple of days before. And if you look at Leah's questions, which I think are, whatever Melissa has parsed, they're still great questions. They're not simple questions. There's a ton of effort that has to go into them, and I think if we're gonna do diligence with respect to our collective health, we need some time to prepare for this, and we need to understand that we have time to prepare for this.
Is this, uh, Jeff, could you, um, clarify your response? Would, would the planning commission need to have a, uh, for instance, a special meeting to deal with process in order for people to feel like they could move forward a little more, a little more comfortably?
Mary, that's what we're doing right now. I mean, that's, that's exactly what.
What you're trying to do right now?
That's what we're trying to do.
The main focus of this meeting tonight?
Yeah, that was the, the main agenda item is to have a conversation about process and to try, and to try to catch up, so I appreciate, I mean, exactly what we've done at the last meeting. It was requested that we have this conversation. We, we identified it as a topic for the next meeting, at the last meeting. It showed up on the agenda as, as promised, and, and here we are, and I.
So, if Mary Layton is asking me a question, she should ask that question through the chair, and I would like to respond accordingly.
Uh, can I just finish, uh, which is just that I, I do think this is an ongoing conversation, and there's a need to continue it, and I think maybe we can get some initial thoughts on the table, and if anyone wants to speak and wants to hold and prepare for the next time they, we should put it on the agenda item for the next time. It's too important a conversation to keep pushing off. Um, but I do think that we, you know, we need, this is, this was the main agenda item. I'd like to, to move forward and have that conversation.
Yeah, we've just spent twenty minutes talking around it. Let's just do it. We could, you know, let's get started.
Okay, so Jackie, you made a motion that we are gonna proceed with this agenda item.
Yes.
Is anyone going to second that?
We don't have to, it, it's already been approved, Melissa.
Okay, well, before you were bringing up other things, and so I wanted to make sure, are we all good? Okay, we're gonna proceed.
My goodness.
Excuse me?
So I asked a question with respect to Mary Layton. It was not answered, so let's just ignore Mary's question and move on, right? So Mary asked, I believe, Mia a question. If she wants to do that, she can ask it through the chair.
Okay, I'm not sure.
On, if you wanna squelch Mary's question, that's fine, go ahead.
I would never wanna squelch Mary's question. I'm really glad she's here. Um, Mary, was there a question?
I didn't say that, Melissa. Mary asked a question, and Jeff Lebel cut in without recognition by the chair. So this is a process.
I'm directing a question to Mary. If Mary had a question for Jeff Goodrich, Mary, do you have a question for Jeff Goodrich?
Yes, I'll try to remember if I can parse my question again, 'cause I often forget once, it's set. So my question was whether the planning commission needed a, a separate meeting to deal with process questions so that everyone could, uh, move forward comfortably when they come to a planning commission meeting. Everyone, and I will add to my question, so that everyone understands the, the format, the rules, the documentation, so, but, uh, I guess that's my question. I'll just leave it at that.
Your question is to Jeff Goodrich?
No, I'm, I'm, what I'm trying to do is back up, cause I think, I think Jeff is asking for a more formal, uh, structure to asking the question. So I'm trying to ask the question that I've already asked, which is, is this, you know, is there a need for a special planning commission meeting to discuss process in order that, uh, you know, the functioning of the planning commission can go forward comfortably? That was my question. And I think that's the point where Jeff Lebel, um, tried to answer it, but, uh, if we're backing up and becoming more formal, that's my question.
Okay, and Jeff Goodrich, did you wanna respond to this?
Yeah, yeah, to Mary, again, whom I appreciate and respect greatly. Yeah, to Mary, again, whom I appreciate and respect greatly, absolutely, Mary. I'm deeply concerned about the, the process by which this group has conducted its business. For an extended period of time, and, and we, we need to talk about it to the extent that's necessary, hopefully, to hear.
Okay, thank you, and at this point, I think we'd like to proceed. To hopefully going through these questions and having some discussion. Debriefing on the town plan, talking about what we can do better in the future as a group to be more productive. I will remind members that we do have two more agenda items after this, and so we do need to leave some time for that. And that may mean adding this to the agenda next time, and that's fine. But that's, that's where we're at. So the, the first question that I pulled was, you know, what were we trying to accomplish with the town plan? Jackie?
Yes, so we were asked by the select board in, I think it was December of 218, to rewrite the town plan that was. Rejected by the regional planning commission, it had been approved by the town, but it was rejected by the regional planning commission. And. Our goal was to address the region criticism as well as make sure we had a very inclusive process. And got lots of public input and public feedback, that was our charge. And if you looked at, yeah, and that was. You know, when we passed the motion to take on that assignment, we included those parameters in that, in that motion. So anyway, that was our, that was a task in front of us.
Thanks, Jackie, does anyone else have anything they'd like to add? To that, or do we, are we all pretty much in agreement, Ernie?
I, I'm wondering if I should be putting in my sort of counter. Statement to what Jackie just said of what I perceive was, was being trying to be accomplished. Is that appropriate now, or I can wait, I have, I, I don't want to derail this process by any stretch.
No, I appreciate that, Ernie, but I think to me it would be appropriate to discuss these questions one at a time. So if you have something you want to respond to particularly about that question, then, then feel free.
Okay, so what I'd like to say is, is that I have a very different viewpoint of what, what was being tried to be accomplished. With the way the town plan was, was handled, from my point of view. There was a, a predetermination of how the town plan was going to come out. Certainly before I got on the board. And the predetermination was basically to. Make sure that the town plan favored development, a lot of development. Make sure it favored a significant population growth. And, and so on, and it was determined. And it was to design to ignore what the majority of people are in the town for and want the town to be. And. I think to that end, what happened is. Dissenting voices were squelched on a regular basis. I can give specific instances, but I'm not, I think it's premature for that. I think that. The process we used whereby, basically, the, the members of the planning commission were basically rubber stamps. For what was brought to them and was, was presented to them. And we didn't really discuss very much, the only thing that we, that was written by. The members or any number, any members of the planning commission was the affordable housing. Section and. About a paragraph that I had some significant input into, which that was backdoored out of the, the. The town plan at the very last minute, the housing, affordable housing is very much a very pro-development, pro. Growth, unsustainable growth approach to, to, to this town. And I think that our being rubber stamps to most of what was written. Was, was, was a means of just controlling any dissent. And controlling the structure, controlling basically the word sustainability, this is just one example, I'm not saying this is the whole problem. But the word sustainability, there was an allergy to putting that, including that one single word. In the, in the, in, in the language of the town plan. That made no sense, because there's a lot of noise about environmental concerns, but environmental concerns literally hinge on being sustainable. So, you know, you can't have environmental concerns being respected without sustainability, but. That was left out, and it was left out on purpose, I have no idea why.
Okay.
I, that's what leads me to believe that the town plan was already predetermined, and what it was, was the, the process was designed simply to make it look like there was a process. I think the, 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 how the, it works with the. The, the public input, public only gets to have a say in anything in this town, this is not just the town plan, this is everything. The town, the town, townspeople only have a say after everything has already been done, and they have to basically have a rear guard action, and if there's opposition. They are generally blocked by the amount of time that they actually get a chance to put on their, their opposing positions.
Okay, Brian Loeb has his hand up, and Brian?
Yeah, thanks, Melissa. Ernie, I, I'm sorry, that was your experience, I remember those long discussions we had about. Sustainability at your suggestion and our collective attempts. To understand your point of view and incorporate your concepts supported by data. In the plan, and I'm sorry you weren't happy with how that turned out. I will say for myself. I, as others did, took the initiative to write parts of the town plan. And, and I do see my work. Reflected in the lists of interviews that we documented in the town plan. And in the language of the plan itself, and the goals, the research, the structure, the, the tone. And I do see myself in that, and it was not handed to me. If anything, it was handed to me by the extensive research I did, both quantitative. And in dozens of in-person interviews with folks across the town from all walks of life. With all different interests, perspectives, experience in the town, I looked far and wide. For folks who could guide me as a newcomer to the town, to the true housing needs. And the needs for town services and facilities, including childcare, and I see that work reflected in the town. It was not handed to me, perhaps you as someone who worked on different chapters had a different experience. Perhaps, perhaps others had still another experience, but I feel proud of the work that I did on the town plan, and I see myself in it.
Thank you, Brian, Jeff Lubel?
Yeah, thank you. I, I do have, we're kind of migrating into the next question here, right, which is, I hope that's okay. I think that's normal, right, that we would start to get into that, I, I do have some concerns that. This process is not going to lead to the healing and the mutual understanding that we're hoping for, but maybe it's, it's a start. But I do think we need to figure out a way to listen to each other and hear each other more. So I, that's not criticism of anyone's comments, just a concern about the functioning of this body and, and the need for. You know, a process that we can all feel comfortable with and, and. But let me just tell you my experience of town planning, for good or for bad, I mean, I, I, overall, I, I think it was really an extraordinary collaborative. Activity, I, I have a lot of respect for the professional staff of our town, and I think they have a role. To play, and I don't think personally that the commission members need to do all the work, I think that having a collaboration between. The planning commission members and, and the staff is, is the appropriate thing to do, so I. I mean, I think we all sort of were assigned to, to help out with different chapters, and we kind of dug in and, and contributed, we had. Numerous opportunities for public input. I had many, many sessions of affordable housing even before the town plan started. Where we had listening sessions, and we had public meetings, and we had meetings with different groups, and we just tried to get input and, and reflected, and then. The Affordable Housing Committee met numerous times again with public input opportunities, so I feel like. There's just been a ton of opportunity for public input and for discussion. Now, does that mean that it's perfect? No, I'm sure there are ways to improve it, but we're, we're a small town. I think everyone is acting in good faith, I wish we could recognize and acknowledge that we're all acting in good faith and treat each other. Like we're acting in good faith, I don't feel like we always do that, and I, you know, think that's really important, and we encourage us to do that. I do have one word of constructive criticism, I, I do feel like the timeline of the, of the plan was not ideal. That it was rushed, particularly at the end, we were trying to bump up against a deadline, but. And I think in an optimal scenario, we would have had more time for further discussion. So that would be one area where I think we could improve next time, and I think that might have. Contributed to some of the concerns that people had that we didn't have opportunity for discussion. But having said that, you know, I was given an opportunity to provide input, I provided input, I felt like input was considered. And, and taken, I just wish I'd had a little bit more time and hadn't been under the time pressure, so. Kudos to the professional staff, to Rod, to others, kudos to all the members of this commission, and. You know, if I, I, I wish we had been. Yeah, I mean, I feel like we don't have very, maybe a criticism is that our affordable housing goals are not quite as ambitious. As I might have liked, we tried to adopt goals that we thought people could live with, so they're not, you know, quite as aggressive as I probably, I would have liked to see, but. You know, it's important to take a step in the right direction and make progress, and I'm hopeful that we can get on track and actually, actually accomplish them.
Stuart, I think you have your hand up next.
Let me, let me unmute myself, so I'd just like to. Comment on what has been said before by Jackie. By Jeff Lubel, and also by Ernie. The discussion about having listened to a lot of public input, to me, falls very short. Of, of what is available and what actually transpired, and what I'm referring to. Is the 205 survey, which was answered by 1,000 people. And the 2018 survey, which was answered by 500 people, in both those surveys. Fifty-five percent of the people said they wanted to see the population of Norwich remain pretty much the same. As it was, or maybe decrease slightly. And to me, from, from what I can see in the plan, you've done exactly the opposite. What you've done is exactly the opposite, what you've done is to promote intense, more intense. I don't mean to leave that word out, because it, it was a word that was added after there was an outcry, more intense development. And it seems pretty clear to me that, that people were not in favor. Of more intense development, they sort of liked things the way they were, but that's not the direction that the planning commission has gone in. So that's, that's one of the objections that has been raised by, not just me, but by a number of people. So you had, you had 1,800.
Okay.
You had, you know, 1,500 people who weighed in.
Melissa, as a point of order. As a point of order, isn't this about feedback from the planning commission, and I apologize to.
Yeah, I really feel like we need to, this needs to be our conversation, we, we took your comment, and Jackie, I think you were the next to put your hand up.
Yeah, okay, thank you, I appreciate that, yeah, I was going to build on what Brian said and talk about my experience on the economic development chapter, which I really enjoyed. Getting involved with the, the NBC council that I'd never participated in before, got a chance to go to their meetings, meet with different business leaders. Was hosted by the bookstore for. A, an event where we invited people to come to the town square and, and. Provide input to economic development chapter, we were all given drafts of the. The guidelines from the region of what needed to be included, or guidelines from the state, what needed to be included in our plan. That was the springboard that we all had in our hands when we went out the door in January, I think it was, Rod provided that to us. Things to think about, how would we gather input on those sections, so I felt like that was a really helpful steer for us, and. Drove us into a lot of different directions in the town to get more input than, you know, we had gotten in the past, I know. I think, I felt like there was also a real emphasis on, you know, making sure we reflected different inputs, we say over and over and over and over again in the, in the, in the plan. About maintaining the rural character of Norwich, and, 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 and just trying to get a little bit of everybody in the plan. What popped up is a big issue, you might remember, is the conflict between the forest blocks and the development, we found out that all the development had been going on in the forest blocks. How do you pull that back? I mean, that really is the thrust of the town, of the plan. And in terms of surveys, we were lucky to have all different survey input, we had two postcard surveys, we had the select board survey. We looked at the 2005 survey again, so there was a lot of survey input, which I think is really important. But I think there's also different ways to look at surveys, and the cup can be half full or, or half empty. Most people go down the middle, if you look at the responses, when you have a one to five scale, most people choose three. And then you got about the same portion of people on the, to the right of that scale, the same portion of the people to the left of that scale. We never really give much of a voice to the people on one side of the scale. So I, I think, you know, how we interpret surveys is really, really important, and maybe we could use some more guidance on that the next time we do a plan, have more. Specialized input, so that we are designing the survey, it's just, there's a science to it, and that we're interpreting the results in a proper way.
I, I don't know who had their hand up first, if it was Ernie or Jeff. Jeff, I think it was you, okay.
Yeah, so. What Jackie just said, I largely agree with, actually. What she said at the outset, when we look at the question of what are we trying to accomplish, so. If we say we're going to rewrite the town planning and include the public, I agree with that statement too. But I don't think that's what we did. And contrary to what Jeff Lubel said, I don't think it was done in good faith. And when Jeff Lubel talked about being assigned, I think that is a critically flawed process issue. At the end of the day, we had a chair who said, I have asked Rod. So all of you submit the committees you want to be on, and Rod's going to designate which committee you're going to be on. I object to that, I object to that based on law, the VSA's controversial, excuse me, excuse me.
I just want to say with the chapter.
Let me finish, I'm sharing my view, you may not agree. You can continue to interrupt like you did throughout the entire process, like Ernie said, you can, you can trash me all you want. So at the end of the day, like Jeff said, we were assigned, to me, that is not appropriate process. And, and the dilemma for me is, I agree with Brian and, and Leah with respect to the housing efforts. I like the work that Brian ultimately did, and I tried to support him and Leah in that process. But the process shouldn't consist of, I, as a chair, I'm going to tell you which committee you're going to be on, even worse, as a planning commission member, I asked to participate in other subcommittees. I asked to have the times and dates for involvement. Neither staff nor our planning commission leadership gave me that information, I was excluded from the process. As a planning commission member, like the public, I was excluded from process. And on top of that, like Ernie said, and, and, and look, I'm not, I, I agree with some of what Ernie said, not all of it, some of it, not all of it. The ad hominem was horrific in the process, if we disagreed, we were attacked, and you know, Mary and Linda were at a meeting where I. Went nose to nose with the planning commission member, because our chair couldn't serve in the proper role. To ask the planning commission member to stop the ad hominem, and I said, I'm, I'm not going to be a part of a group that's going to attack people on this commission. And I got up and left. That was in Tracy Hall. That's how, that's how broken the process was. So yeah, Brian, I agree with you. I think your work was great. I was glad to support that. But, but that's, that's a narrow window into this entire broken process. Now, I want to also say, when Jeff Lubel talks about process, I remember discussions at the outset. Look, we, we wanted to be subcommittees. We don't want to involve public. We don't want to slow the process down. We don't have recordings of any of that. But that's what was said. I objected to that.
I have no recollection of saying anything like that.
Yeah, Jeff, this is just a question for the group. Rather than rehashing, you know, what any individual supposedly said, because we don't have the recordings. Can we talk about ways that we would do this differently in the future?
Yeah, Melissa, turn, turn it around. Let's, let's not project here. So how about we engage folks in a open, in an open process? We allow folks to engage in an open process. How about we do that?
Okay, Jeff, I'm not sure. I'm asking. I'm not sure how I'm not allowing this to be an open process.
Saying you're not, Melissa, I am simply saying the process we went through. Don't put names. I'm being very specific because Jackie said stuff, Brian said stuff, Jeff Lubel said stuff, Ernie said stuff. I'm trying to respond to them, not address them in any sort of ad hominem paradigm. I'm trying to address specific memories that I have. And in that context, how might we proceed forward to have an open and involved process that includes not only Planning Commission members, but also the public? That's my core question. Why didn't we do that? And why don't we do that going forward?
Okay, thank you. Ernie, I think you were next.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's so much that's, that's gone, gone on. I'm trying to figure out which one, which, which piece is the best to bring up. But I think what I'm gonna stick, start with is simply the relationship between the Planning Commission and staff. First of all, we have an amazing planning director. Okay, I've spoken to him a number of times. I have incredible respect. He's an incredibly strong environmental advocate. He actually, from what I understand, even actually defended very strongly the language that I was so proud of that was in the town plan that got removed surreptitiously, well, not surreptitiously, but in just a bad faith way. But he's not our, we don't answer to him. He has to answer to us. He is basically our clerk, our advisor and our scrivener. We're supposed to be the ones who come up with the direction, with what has to happen and so on. And I know there's complications because of the town's management structure, you know, staff management structure. And I think we have that, that's something that has to be addressed, but not in the planning by the Planning Commission. But we have to be the ones who say, this is what we want for town plan. And we didn't. Some of us, a little, a few of us said, but I didn't feel like I had a whole lot to say. As a matter of fact, now talking about the, the working group that I was in, which was the land use one primarily. I got excoriated when I quoted an expert who said something that, he didn't say something to the effect. He said clearly, people who moved to this region because of we were discussing the, all the developments across the river and so on, all the people that moved to this region are not going to move to Norwich because of, and he listed off a half a dozen things, including the, the, the value of properties. He listed off the fact that the amenities that they would want, that there's just no possible way that they could have in Norwich because of distances and all kinds of stuff. He, he said there was no, there was no reasonable way to expect that there could be practical affordable housing in the town. When I brought that up just in a working group, I got yelled at, and I mean yelled at by a member of the group.
I mean.
That squashes discussion. Okay, you can't have discussions when that kind of stuff happens. And you, 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 you end up polluting the entire process of, of that, that to me polluted the entire process of the, that particular incident was the beginning of the end of, of the working group process. And then to find out that the town has actually put into a document stating that the, the, the working groups were the work of the, and were to serve the purposes of the planning director and which puts the Planning Commission in a subordinate position to the planning director. You can try and argue it other ways. And I'm not saying you, Melissa, so I know you're the chair and that's why you're being talked to, not because you're being accused of any of this. Okay, just let me make that clear. You, you, that, that was, that I think is good evidence at this point of how broken the system is because that's what the town wants to put out in the public, in the public, that that's how we operate. And I think that that's completely wrong. I think that's got it absolutely backwards.
Well, and I think, I guess my question is just working towards the future is that, I mean, we're not gonna use working groups clearly in the future, but how, how are we gonna handle having differences of opinions? Cause.
I answer that?
I mean, i- it's for anyone to answer, but I feel like, you know, some of these objections of people had different opinions on how to handle things and not everyone can have their way. And what do we do to move forward?
Well, first of all, one of the things that I didn't see at all happen in any negotiation, if they want to even call it negotiation of any points in, 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 in any discussions here, was no one ever thought, you know, when I'm, when I'm having to do a negotiation in, in a legal matter, the basic thing that has to work is both sides have to be able to hold their heads up and think, and walk out of the room saying, I got at least part of what I wanted. That didn't happen ever. It was, everything was what was predetermined and it was all just go straight and, and make sure that we had lots of affordable housing. Make sure we had some, some nods to, to, to climate change, but nothing substantive, just a few nods to it. Resilience, which is preserving manmade structures. You know, went on and on. I mean, I, I, I could, I could, I could outline, redline the whole town plan, but I'm not going to write it for the purpose of discussion. But there is ways of people learning to talk and, and consider the other person's side and find ways to compromise instead of just bulldozing their approach down the, everyone else's throat.
And I think that would be appreciated. I think Leah had her hand up.
Yeah, Leah's next.
Thank you. Um, I'm gonna just try and answer these questions from my perspective. And so originally, when we started the process, and first of all, I'd like to share that the, the suggested questions that were given, you know, it's important, like question number one, what were we trying to accomplish? I, I'm trying to look at it as a discussion about the town plan because every type of project or how we interact with one another could be considered separate. I, I know we're kind of weaving suggestions for the future, but I'm, I'm gonna share from my perspective of what happened. And so my experience was that there were, and I'm gonna go from top to bottom, was what's happening now, I think is a however, you know, if it is uncomfortable for some or not, it, it's part of a debrief and, and that people are going to share views that maybe they're sharing a vulnerability of themselves that are a frustration from the past, et cetera. And so it's important as a process of debrief to allow that to be said and not necessarily fix it, hold it, hold, just hold that. And another point that I think I shared in the suggestions, or maybe it was embedded in the links that I originally shared, is that sometimes with certain projects, especially if there are disagreement or, or can't seem to move forward in process, sometimes a special meeting or a facilitator might be needed to just aid in conversation. I'm not saying that that's what we need to do. I'm just sharing that that might be something to consider. So from my experience of the process, yes, came on board to, to this Planning Commission. There were several new members to create the town plan. You know, what was supposed to happen and what did happen, I could sense early on that there were different interpretations and different, I would say, expectations of what individuals versus group wanted to accomplish. I personally feel that some of the like one of the questions as far as obstacles or constraints, I think the ambitious deadline was definitely a, a very strong factor in in allowing, I would say, our, our conflict to arise or become resolved. Whether that's, you know, working or re-editing or discussing. I think the ambitious deadline and, and the fact that there, you know, there was a deadline that we were working to to me was a reminder of, okay, what's the greater good? I know I was acting in good faith. I trust that many people were. I don't want to discount anyone's feelings that maybe there weren't, you know, clearly there, there were disagreements in, in my experience going through the process. I I think there was discrepancy. I think I also, my recollection from it was that we were working together as a team of planning commissioners and staff to get this task done in the ambitious timeline. My recollection was that you know, drafts or templates of process and, and content were presented to the group to be able to contribute as they could. I know for me, I contributed. I had even said to the committee, I don't feel like I'm a subject matter expert enough to write a chapter. I'm happy to edit, read, contribute in public discussions, et cetera. And that's how I contributed. So just like when Brian was saying, he felt his voice was part of the process. I felt that my contribution was there, though I know that I had mentioned to the group, is that gonna be okay? That I'm not writing something? I would rather edit, read and engage with the public. And that was acceptable. So I felt that I contributed as I could and I I really enjoyed the public opportunity to talk with people, not only in the sessions where we asked them for whatever their comment was on a special topic or on the text themselves, but I did have conversations with people to say, how did you feel about this process? And I, I enjoyed engaging in that way and I took pride in hearing people sharing their comments. They're not all in agreement, but they've said, thank you for allowing this to happen. And then as a wrap up, one of the things I think for future is, you know, I, I think sometimes when you're looking at a project and how you did, it's kind of like looking at toys. Dump the toys out. And sometimes some are broken and some don't match and we've just gotta hold the space and hear that so that as we look forward, we can figure out what to do. And clearly what's been happening, in my opinion, from the outset of this project forward is there seems to be on a whole, and I'm not trying to make a, a wide brush stroke of it, some sort of, well, there's differences of opinion, not only on the topic itself, but how we do things. So I think this will be a continued conversation of how we work together and deal with not necessarily being outvoted. That might not be the issue. The issue is the process of how we deal with dissent or how we deal with each other so that we can work together. I've heard in the past, people saying things like, we're dysfunctional. And some people saying, no, we're not. And, but that word itself is, is something worth addressing as all of us because there is important work for the town to fo, for us to focus on. And I'm mindful that if even some of us are saying we're dysfunctional, then that's something we should address. I do think one, you know, as far as ways to handle things ne- next time or things to consider, I, I feel I feel there's some level of slowing down, if possible, managing expectations, managing timeframes. You know, moving to the top, whatever needs to be urgent, managing ourselves to meet those needs of timeframes and, and hot topic issues to in order for the greatest good to come forward. And I'm, I'm not opposed to negative feelings coming out. I think that helps, but I, I really have felt a bit disheartened to watch moments of either members of the public or members of this commission take words at each other that I feel aren't helping the public and our practices of what, and our, our goals of what we need to do. And I think that there that, I think that it's important to look at how we work together. I know when I started on the Planning Commission, one of the things that I had said, and I think it's still important, is I see I see that we have a role to play in, in showing and reflecting to the community how people can interact with one another. So if we're not, or if people feel that we're not, we need to look at that. And that's the generalization that I want to share.
Thank you, Leah. I appreciate that. Didn't, I see Jeff has, Jeff, you have your end up, Jeff Goodridge. I can't remember if someone else did before and I'm sorry. But Jeff, if you wanna go first.
Yeah, I, I mostly agree with Leah and I've talked to her about the same thing she said. So, you know, tonight I say something and I, and the chair of the commission says, are you threatening me? I'm horrified. So I'm, I'm gonna let it go. Having said that, my experience with the commission through the town plan process is if you don't agree, we're going to attack you. Okay, fine, let's let it go. The, the question is going forward. How do we create a construct? How do we get a chair and a vice chair? And with all respect, it's not about the chair and the vice chair. Just because they may be tripping over stuff because we're all guilty. Why isn't every single member of this commission, I've had this conversation with Leah and I've had this conversation with Brian. Why aren't we all interceding and saying, stop it? Stop. Let's address one, one another collegially. Look, Ernie said a bunch of stuff tonight that I don't agree with and that's okay. But I'm not attacking him. And I'm not saying to Ernie, you're threatening me. I'm not saying any of these things that are, that are terribly undermining. So from my perspective, given Melissa's earlier comment about agenda, I'd like to suggest we didn't get quite through the first question. Let's move on, table it and get on to other business because it's now 7:53.
Jeff Lubel.
Yeah, I, I'd like to suggest that we, well, first of all, I think I, you know, it's not, it's not pleasant to listen to concerns and criticism, but it's important. And so I acknowledge that and I, I think I'm glad that people felt comfortable to share their thoughts and appreciate everyone's views tonight. I, I'm one of these people that's always very forward looking. I'm always like, how do we establish a set of processes and rules and procedures that allow us to work together collegially? And you know, I, I've seen this done in, in groups where you come up with a list. I think we tried to do it at one point, right? A list of principles and maybe we need to kind of bring those up again because I really think we need to think about what we're saying, the tone of voice we're using, the way in which we're sort of a, a, addressing and listening to and being respectful of dissent even as we move forward. And I you know, I use the word dysfunctional, not to describe any particular person, but to describe I think a dynamic that has arisen on this committee where I don't think we're all necessarily talking to each other out of respect. I don't think we are expecting, I don't think we're giving people the benefit of the doubt and assuming they're acting in good faith, which I think we should do. Because I do think everyone is acting in good faith. And I would like to think about maybe for a future meeting, trying to revisit and perhaps establish some ground rules about how we can talk to each other, how we can treat each other. Maybe we do, as Mary suggested, need to have a conversation about how formal the conversation needs to be because there seems to be some disagreements, like I'm not, for example, one to think that we need to follow Roger's rules of order. I mean, I think as long as we're respectful of each other, but other people may disagree, maybe we need to have that conversation. But I, I think if we could kind of look toward the future and be constructive and try to establish some. kind of look toward the future and be constructive and try to establish some, some principles that we can all agree from. And that, you know, when I went to law school, the focus in negotiation was always like, don't talk about the bottom line and talk about the principles. Like, how do you reach agreement on the core principles? And usually, when you do that, the end just kind of flows. And so I would just encourage that as a future agenda item.
Okay, so Jackie, did you have something?
Yeah, I just want to underscore, I think the tone of voice that's used is, is very important. And it's not been pleasant, the last few meetings we've had, to say the least. And so I think tone of voice is something really for us to pay attention to.
Thank you. Jeff Goodrich.
Yeah, so I don't understand tone, given the Zoom volume setting issues. But words like threaten and other things, those are not tone words. Words have been used that should not be used from my perspective in a collegial setting. So I don't want to mask what's actually going on with stuff like tone. How about we address one another collegially? I've been asking for this over and over and over again.
Anyone else? Are we ready to move on to the next agenda item and come, come back to ground rules or whatever discussion we want to have for the next meeting? Ron.
I just want to try and
Hey, as a point of order, this is not a staff question, Melissa. Let's move on. If the planning commission wants to move on, let's move on.
Excuse me, Jeff. What I'm going to ask is, in my role as clerk, I'd like to know how it is that you want me to document the conversation that's just taken place. It's, there's a lot of content, a lot of sharing, and I, I really don't know how to draw a strand through this conversation that that is going to give people who can make contributions a respectful treatment. I, I don't, I don't feel like I'm in a good position to actually summarize or, or outline the dialogue. So I just want to put it back to you as the clerk in this role that I don't know how to do the minutes for this section of the meeting.
Jeff LaBelle, I think you had your end up first.
Yeah, my, my recommendation is that we not try to have a tit for tat type of minutes that instead you, you document the nature of the overall nature of the conversation. You know, the topics that were talked about. And that, because it seems to me the purpose of the minutes is to document overall what was talked about. And if there are any actions taken, those need to be recorded with specificity. But I think the problem with trying to record tit for tat is that it's very, very difficult to do, short of producing a transcript. It's very, very difficult to do accurately. So that would be my recommendation.
Thanks, Jeff Goodrich.
I don't understand the term tit for tat. I don't receive that positively. So I would say, in, in the context of last, the meetings for this meeting, the minutes for last meeting that were presented tonight, I would suggest we start transcribing minutes.
And I, I'm not, I'm not able to do that. I'm not, I'm not.
That's not my question. The planning commission can make a decision with respect to how we proceed. And the planning commission can engage the select board with respect to how that occurs. It has nothing to do with you. And I acknowledge that you can't, there's no way you could do that, or I could do that. So I get it.
Ernie, I think you had your end up next.
Yeah, I was just going to suggest that a, as a matter of, of, of just trying to make this doable, instead of having, you know, verbatim minutes, which I think is what Jeff means by tit for tat. You know, Rod could use more getting the tone, getting, getting with the important stuff down. But what, what could happen, because he, he, I assume he listens to the recordings to get to, to remember it all. And what he could do is put down, you know, find some way, I assume those recordings all have minutes attached to, I mean, literally timestamps or something like that to them. And he could cite, you know, where this information comes from. So if anyone wants to go back, it looks at the minutes. And, and, you know, Rod's putting a good effort at trying to make it as accurate as possible, but there's details that need, are needed filling in and stuff. Maybe if people could easily find in the recordings, more easily find, because it's not a perfect science here, but more easily find in the recording, you know, these recordings could, these recordings are kept for the public use anyway. At least, at least we would have reference to the actual statements people made, and you could actually go back and listen to the, to the statements. I don't know, I, 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 that's just an idea. I'm just throwing it out.
Leah has her hand up.
So it, it's more to Ernie. So just, so I'm hearing it, right? Are, are you suggesting in a way like under this sub-subject heading that we were discussing the debrief, we were following the guidelines? And then state the names of the people, you know, to say shared initial thoughts for the actual words, go to this link, you know, forty minutes in?
I'd say something like that, yeah. You know, something like that. I mean, yeah, I'm not a hundred percent sure. I, I'm taking some, some assumptions here that, that there, there are timestamps on, or it's capable of doing, you know, it's capable of doing that. But I, I have to assume Rod listens to the, to the, to refresh his memory. He has to listen to the tapes. If he's doing that, all he has to do is make a note of where he got the information that he's putting down. And then basically, the minutes, when it comes time for us to review the minutes, all people either do is they'll, they'll look at that. If they, they can either question, first of all, can question and all that. But if they think something's left out, it's easier for everyone to or when it comes time to redraft the minutes, if they have to be redrafted, you know, there can be some kind of a citation put in as to where you found that on, where Rod found it or didn't find it. You know, or where it should roughly be or something like that. So that, so that there's access to the entire a bit of evidence of that the meeting took place and things were said and so on and so forth. It's kind of like a paper trail.
Thank you. Jackie, I think you had your hand up next.
Jeff can go first.
Okay, and Brian loved it too, and I don't want to.
Okay, go ahead.
Oh, my comment is on the exercise in general. I, I don't have a comment on this particular question.
Okay, Jeff LaBelle, is yours on this question?
Yeah, yeah, I, I I think it's important that the minutes be feasible for our clerk and not too time consuming, because he's very busy responding to legal challenges about the open meeting law and other things. Plus, he has a day job to do. So I, so that's one thing. Secondly, I think there's a danger if we try to record just a part of what people say, but not everything, that we'll get into these endless conversations about the minutes. And that will go on and on and on, and we'll like have to transcript and like amend the minutes. So my suggestion is that we, as I suggested, just describe the general conversation that took place. If it is relatively easy to point people to the part of the videotape where that was discussed, that could be an amendment, but I wouldn't try to pick out, you know, the highlights and then refer people, because then somebody's going to come back and say, well, I really want you to record my statement. And so I want you to record my statement. And we get into like this thing where we spend half of our meeting talking about the minutes. I really want to like, like, I don't, you know, the recordings up online, if people really want to hear the, if you don't like tit for tat, blow by blow, whatever, what everyone said, there's an opportunity to do that. But I don't think the minutes is the place to rehash all of that personally.
Thank you. Yeah, I want to support what Jeff says, because we, we need to think of purpose here. What is the purpose of this exercise? The recordings are available if anybody wants them, but let's make good use of our time and Rod's time. And it's not to just be documenting endless minutes of, of us trying to figure out how to work together. I mean, that's, you know, we came, we were on this commission to do more important work than that. I mean, we have to work together well, but, but let's, let's not have that get in the way of getting any other work done. And so I'd, I'd like to minimize the work that we all have to do related to minutes. We have a recording. Rod is very capable of putting out good minutes. Let's, let's just leave it at that.
Ernie.
One thing we shouldn't minimize is the importance of the process that we arrive at things by. I think that that is important. So that's all I've got to say is that how we arrive, our process is important. It's not just a byproduct, and it's not just filler.
Okay, great. Thanks, Ernie. Brian?
Sure, I just, yeah, I just want to thank you for introducing this agenda item, raising it, you know, continuing to press its importance. This, this kind of discussion is really hard. It's, it's a big part of my day job is leading groups through this kind of exercise. It's really hard to get people to step into kind of a different mental space. And you know, think of, think of the future as much as the past. And so just again, I want to thank you. I hope we can have it on future agenda items. Something that, that may help and that came up kind of late in the discussion was revisiting the principles that we had spoken about quite some time ago. Sometimes if you have a goal like that, that we're working together to respond to that, that can help focus the attention and, and kind of shave away some of the, some of the recrimination and the focus on the past. So it'd be a kind of a gentle suggestion for future, you know, returns to this exercise. But overall, just wanted to thank you. You know, it, it, it got to points of seeming darkness. But I want to reassure you, I, I thought it was healthy and it's a good exercise to do.
Okay. Well, I, this will be on future agendas. If people, you know, have specific questions that they think would be helpful to address, I'm, I'm very open to including those, because, you know, as I told Leah, I think at the beginning of this, I don't think I've ever debriefed on anything. So like, this is not my wheelhouse. But I appreciate that, Leah, and, and now I know Brian as well, that this is something you guys have done. And so please feel free to, to send me input. With that, I think it's time to move on to agenda item eight, which I don't know how much there is. But Jackie, did you want to report on the town plan action items?
Yes, I just wanted to say again, that I'm really pleased with the involvement of folks around these action items. The select board has been reviewing this, you know, almost regularly at their meetings, and that's wonderful. We have, and we have the childcare committee coming out of that. The Green Fleet Committee is evolving. The, I want to also add, they're looking to the planning commission for some next steps and direction on the wastewater study. And so I'd like to make sure, maybe we put that on our agenda for next, next in December. The other item is the Affordable Housing Subcommittee is really doing a good job of putting a spotlight on the any possible town properties, or I guess we're looking now at the Prudential Committee properties that might be potential for housing. And maybe at our next meeting, also in December, if we could touch on that briefly. And education efforts in the community to let people know that, you know, we are very interested in solutions for affordable housing. Those were two, two of the action items from the town plan that the Affordable Housing Subcommittee, I know it's on their agendas, it's on their plate. Maybe we have spent, spent a little bit of time on our agenda, on our agenda next week, or next, next month, I should say, listening to their solutions and their progress. In the age of COVID, I'm really, as I say, very pleased that we are moving the peanuts down the field this year. So that's good news.
Thank you. Rod, did you want to give an update on the village designation?
Yes. The select board unanimously passed a resolution in support of applying for village standard designation. And the application is a sort of a rolling deadline of the first Monday of the month, and then the downtown board, which is the body that hears the application, meets on the fourth Monday of the month. And that's, I think it's the fourth Monday. It's either the third or the fourth Mondays. Anyway, it's November the twenty-third, which is coming up. And so the knowledge application will be before the downtown board with a recommendation to approve membership of the village standard designation program on the basis of staff reaction to the submission that I filed last Monday.
Great.
Not, not this week, the previous week.
Thank you. Any questions about that?
Oh, and the, the application that I put together is in the packet, if you have any questions about it.
Great. Thank you, Rod. Any other business? All right, none. Future meetings, schedules, and agendas. Our next meeting is on December tenth at six thirty, which we, we changed because the other one was on Christmas Eve. So just to make a note. I I don't know when the next one after that is, and I will by next meeting. Agenda items, Jackie mentioned some of the town plan. It sounds like we want to continue having.
Yes. Yes.
And discussion about.
Yes, specifically the, I know you all remember, our action item in the town plan was to update the two thousand and five wastewater study. Let's, I know we, we, we made an attempt to, at that this summer, and that got sidelined. And so let's take a look at that again, because you know, the urgency is that we know that the school board is looking at a solution for the school. And the question is, you know, what if any role should the town play in that? Is there any benefit that the town might get from that exercise that they go through? And so trying to just get some facts on the table of our current situation. So I just would like to have some more discussion as a group on that and where, where we might go with it. And then I think also an update from the Affordable Housing Committee on the Prudential Committee land, where that stands, and what does an education program look like maybe for twenty twenty-one? You know, maybe some themes or ideas about how that might get created and disseminated.
Great, thanks, Jackie.
Okay.
Does anyone else have any other agenda items? Leah?
I recall other people had asked for some last month, and I thought that they were either in the minutes or in an email to you. So I'm just kind of making a request for you to check those, because I think we kind of said we'll put them in a future, and we just didn't say when.
I'll check what my notes from last time. If you, if you think about it, want to email me, that'd be great, too. Ernie?
And I would like to keep discussion of process and so on on the agenda.
Okay, great. Jeff LaBelle?
Yeah, I was going to ask if, if, to kind of following up on what Ernie said, if maybe we could try to, you know, at least try to agree on some ground rules for how we are going to conduct our meetings and work together and that, you know, I know we, we came up with a list before, it might be useful to dust it off, take a look at it.
Yeah.
Go around the room, see if there's buy-in, but I, I, I think there's a need for that.
I agree. I, I can send a copy of that list. We did it about two years ago in February, and I have a copy, so I can send that to, I'll send it to you, Melissa, you can figure out what to do with it.
Yeah, that'd be perfect. Thanks, Jackie. Okay, comments from the public. Stuart.
So I, I really do agree with some of the things that have been said in terms of how, how committees, this committee, any committee should conduct themselves. I don't know who it was who said you can disagree without being disagreeable. You know, it's really pretty, pretty simple. But I, and I, I want to return to the notion of public participation and how important it is. And I just, I'd like to point out when, when it's been said that there was a great deal of public participation. I remember taking the trouble to read the hundred and twenty pages, or however many there were, and I redlined it. And I labeled it a better town plan, and I submitted it. That obviously didn't go very far. In fact, it was, as far as I could tell, totally ignored. totally ignored. So I think I think as you get to the point of wanting to do the subdivision regulations and the zoning, that you do pay attention to what the public has to say, not just in small groups, small little focus groups that you have. But take a look at the the big surveys, the two thousand and five and the two thousand and eighteen. There are things in there that I don't think you can interpret in any different way than the way the question was asked. So when people say they don't want to pay for for municipal sewage, I think you ought to respect that. When people say they want to keep the population the same, I think you ought to respect that as well. And there are other points in there that I won't belabor at this moment. But just reread those two surveys and see how similar the responses are. And they're not down the middle. There there are some very strong opinions that are voiced by a majority of the people. So and I'd also like to thank you for just hearing me out. And I I want to wish you also good luck going forward, because you do have you do have a lot of work to do, and you do spend an inordinate amount of time doing it. It's not an easy job. I know, because I was on the planning commission at one point, not only here in Norwich, but also in Waitsfield, Vermont. And I've been on other committees. So yes, I applaud your efforts. Try and agree with each other. Try and listen to each other. Try and try and move it forward in a way that will be acceptable to most people. And thanks again.
Thanks, Stuart. Linda or Mary, any other comments?
Linda can go first. Does Linda have a?
I I don't see Linda's hand up, but I just want to check.
Oh, okay. I did want to speak, though. I just wanted to thank you all for having that debrief, which I think, you know, is a good step. I still stand by the idea that formality is your friend. And if there are disagreements, there can be a motion and a second and a vote, and it almost in my sense silly, but you get stuck otherwise. You know, you just, you lose a a sense of direction. So I'd stand by that. And when I used to take minutes for a small nonprofit, if we had a a big session where it was hard to characterize, we just called it a wide ranging discussion. It almost became a joke among us, but we needed to have wide ranging discussions sometimes to clear the air and move forward. So just say and thank you all for what you do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
Second.
All in favor, or sorry, Jackie, do you want to?
No, I'm just going to say aye. Leah, say aye.
Ernie?
Aye.
Jeff, Lebel?
Hi.
Brian Luke?
Hi.
And I as well. Good night.
Thank you, Melissa.
Thanks, Rod, for taking notes. Appreciate it.